This meeting will all be communication from the Chair on all items since I'm going to be the only committee member that is present. I'm going to ask that all items, speakers on any item be allowed to speak for two minutes. Speakers on any combination of multiple items will also be allowed to speak for a maximum of two minutes. And I'll give a warning now, any animal noises, wild gestures, anything else to disrupt this meeting will result in an ejection. I know people will be disappointed, but I want to thank you for being here and let you know that virtually every item will be on consent. Items one through thirteen, items fifteen and sixteen, and item eighteen will all be on consent, although I'm sure we will be hearing some speakers on them, but if you are here for those items, I would say that you could probably feel safe in leaving and having a good Thanksgiving. Before we place those items on consent, we will have speakers from the public.
I'm the Chair on items nine and eleven. There are technical corrections. With item number nine, instead of exemption of one project coordinator, it should read project assistant. Additionally, for item eleven, it is only a motion that's being considered. We, there was a miscommunication. Other than that, other changes.
Okay, and we are still able to place those two items on consent as well?
We can move forward with them.
Okay. So... The first speaker, Mr. Herman. And you'll have two minutes on your specific nineteen items and one minute and... Is that your testimony? I think you're off-topic, Mr. Herman.
Clock hasn't moved yet. What are you talking about?
You're snorting. If that's your testimony...
No! I am a pig, and I am celebrating the salaries of a no representative for the non-represented classification of disability. As you already know, I participate in all meetings, all public interest on the Department of Disability, you racist fucking city of Los Angeles. Under Woollett versus Los Angeles, you haven't fucking fixed my streets and sidewalks, let alone offer me. Servants pay as well. Now, item three. Do not weigh in what is offensive, Mr. City Attorney. Reports that delegate public interest should not be weighed in as amending new guidelines under Rule fucking seventy-seven. No one's going to ask me to course my way of thinking into the way of a pig. And after all, it's Thanksgiving. Please stay away from the ham, because Mr. Corretts will be offended because Jews do not eat pig. But I eat everything because I am a legislative body of the Brown Act. And the City Attorney Report-
Are you on any particular item?
I'm on fucking three still, goddammit. Let me read. Administrative fucking code four point two four five for the fucking stupid attorney who sits over there like Mr. What's-that jackass Estroffon? Anyways pertaining to fucking vacations that you fucking non-represented executives in fucking positions of Mike Fuer make no certainty for technical changes under the Ralph and Brown Act.
You have one minute for general public comments.
So, you see, Mr. Faubel has been violating our civil rights, the same way you attempt as well, Mr. Corretts. You need to stop trying to enforce Rule seventy-seven by ejection in public meetings. What may seem offensive to some to criticize is protected speech. What may seem offensive to the well-being of what you believe is politically correct may be protected speech. So forty-two U.S.C. nineteen eighty-three grants me my First Amendment protection. I am not going to sit behind and be censored by stupidity, ignorance, and belligerentness of elected officials and jackasses from the City Attorney's office like Mr. Faubel. In the same manner, fuck Mike Fuer's office for not protecting my civil rights. (laughing).
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Wayne Spimler.
Yes, we talked to these fat slob, yes, Polk, Kipper, Pico, Ritz. So number three, we want to talk about this shit on the vacation benefits. You take too many goddamn vacations, don't you? Look at some of the fat slobs here right now. You don't exercise, you're on vacation too much. Too much vacation makes for pork product eaters. But I do not want to digress, so let's talk about the fucking library and number five, disability service exemption for the project coordinators. They are going to try to teach the illiterate how to read. One of the first people they're going to teach is Dory Martinez how to read. She does not how to read. She's a literate, so that's good. And we also want to put into the library the literacy program Mr. Justin Wesson and his lovely wife Alexis Wesson-Krekorian. Yes, they do not know how to read. You know why? They voted the wrong fucking district because of dyslexia, yes.
No, dyslexia is a mental condition.
Oh, I'm sorry, because they're fucking illiterate.
Well done.
Thank you. Now, we get to this other Bureau of Sanitation to pick up rats at City Hall and number eight. Antonia Ramirez brought a large black rat with a bullet hole in it, yes. And we know where she got it from. She got it from Rachael Weezer. She took a shit and out came a large black rat, yes.
No, that's the kids that were-
Oh, that's right, yes, yes. The rats had a bullet hole in it. Where did that come from? Why do rats have bullet holes? Now you're shooting rats, you disgusting persecutors of animals. Fuck you.
Now you have one minute for general public comments.
Yes, so now we give you good news and bad news. The bad news for you city payoff cocksuckers is Rachael Weezer has stepped down from her campaign. She's not going to run for city council, and you know what that means. She's going to be indicted like her stupid fucking philandering drunk bald fat husband, yes. You know, the FBI, they have a bad attitude about this shit. So what I did was, I got on Mr. Spimler's cell phone and I tried to talk to the FBI last night, yes, and they told me to tell you, fuck you, we're putting this wetback in prison, we're putting his fat cunt into prison, and we're going to pay the witnesses off. And Mitchell Englander is not here because he's trying to sign an immunity agreement. Happy Thanksgiving, cunts.
Next speaker is Mr. Hunt.
How many minutes, Mr. Chair?
Two minutes under items and one minute under general public comment.
I'm just taking my general public comment. Hey, you guys, I kind of like Paul Corretts. He's kind of been a good guy, and I really endorse him. So I, you know, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I'll see you guys on Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Happy Thanksgiving. Next speaker is Ms. Ramirez, if she is here. I don't see her here, so next speaker is Ms. Myla Frey. Don't see her here. So the last speaker is Yvonne Michelle Autry. Don't see her here as well, so that closes general public comment. Now we will deal with the consent calendar. Items number one through thirteen, items fifteen through sixteen, and item number eighteen will all be moved on consent. Item nine and item eleven with the amending language. Item number fourteen.
Item fourteen, CIO report relative to increasing the reimbursement rate for all forensic evidentiary examinations.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
This item is a joint report from the CIO. First of all, my name's Robert Roth with the CIO's office. This item is a joint report with the CIO and Personnel Department regarding council motion to increase the reimbursement rate for forensic evidentiary exams. Approval of this proposed motion and recommendations will increase the reimbursement rates paid to Sexual Assault Response Team Centers, known as SART Centers, for providing examination services. The proposed rates are based on a 2017 L.A. County Cost Survey that was used to determine rates that were recently adopted by L.A. County on May first, 2018. The five recommendations specifically provide an increase for the reimbursement rate for sexual assault and child abuse victim exams from seven thirty to one thousand twenty dollars. Increase reimbursement for suspect exams from two hundred to one thousand twenty. Increase reimbursements for incomplete exams to three hundred dollars. Establish a provision to automatically increase this amount by a CPI as well as instruct the CIO and with the assistance of personnel to report back in the FSR on ways to address any shortages that may result from this increase.
And I know the county survey of ten SART centers identified an average cost per exam of a little over a thousand dollars. Is this number consistent with the average costs within the city as well?
The, yes, it is, sir. The survey was, it included ten of the eleven SART centers in Los Angeles. Nine of them responded. The centers in Los Angeles were responsive, and this was a satisfactory number to them.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you. And we have one speaker from the public, Mary Ann Legge. Oh, I'm sorry. Trying to figure out how to pronounce your last name. My apologies.
That's all right. Mary Ann's good. My last name is Corretts.
We even have a quorum.
Excuse me, could we have Mr. Herman removed for shouting out from the audience? You're not required to have a quorum. It's a communication from the Chair when you only have one member. We stated that at the beginning, so please, because you just shouted.
I sound just like you, human. I'm trying to shout, you motherfucking shout. I'm sounding crazy, nigga. Jesus, man, hey. What a game, fucking from both feet to top like this, chief, goddamn crap, motherfucker. What?
Just for the record, of course, Mr. Herman is continuing, you're not allowed to shout out anything from the audience, continuing to disrupt the meeting as he does with every meeting of any city entity, continuing to disrupt. And he's out. So you may start your testimony.
My name is Mary Ann Legge.
And you have two minutes.
I applaud your patience. I am one of the managers of one of the SART centers, and we did provide quite a bit of information to Mr. Roth on our cost and what it costs. Our center, we're a dignity health hospital, and they do support what we've lost. We have not gotten a raise. In 2002, we went to the city council and did get a raise of seven hundred and thirty dollars, but we've been operating with that for, since that time, for the last fifteen years. So our program does lose about three hundred thousand dollars a year, which for a hospital, I will tell you, is very concerning, especially our hospital is joining with another hospital. Dignity Health did have another SART center downtown here at California Hospital, which they closed. So we do fundraising, we do grant writing, all of that to try and make up the difference, but we really ask that you would consider raising our case rate to the cost of doing those exams. We do a lot of training, we go out and talk to the police on how to bring people, things they should know. And all of that is, you know, costing us money. It is, I mean, I will say, we're collecting DNA, we're collecting evidence to really help prosecute these cases, and it does make a very, very big difference. Right now with DNA, that is one of the deciding factors in so many of the cases, as I'm sure you know. And as it gets better and better, it is something we need to preserve. And I think we do help keep the community safe, so hopefully the council will see our value and help us with reimbursement rate at the same. The county did approve it, and since July first, they have been paying that. So now we're asking that the city do the same.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I don't know if there's anyone here from Councilmember Martinez's office who would like to add anything. If not, we will approve that item and approve the CIO report recommendations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen, motion, Corretts, Harris, Dawson, relative to conducting a job performance review on the executive director of the Office of Public Accountability and related matters. This matter is also referred to the Energy, Climate Change, and Environmental Justice Committee.
Well, back in 2010, following the debacle that was the council's consideration of a proposed increase to the energy cost adjustment factor, which was known as the ECAF, the council was wrestling with the issue of reforming the governance of the DWP. And at the same time, customers were concerned about the lack of transparency at the DWP, unresponsiveness of the department to questions both by elected officials and members of the public, and increasing costs on consumer bills that were difficult to read. And so on March seventh, 2011, voters approved Charter Amendment One, which amended the charter to create the Office of Public Accountability and Ratepayer Advocate. The language of the charter, according to the CLA's analysis of the Charter Amendment, requires that the council by ordinance establish the provisions for the operation of the OPA and the ratepayer advocate, which shall include at a minimum reporting schedules and requirements and consumer protection procedures, and that one of the responsibilities of the executive director is to hire staff, one of whom must be a ratepayer advocate. I introduced this motion before us today because it disturbed me that the city council is going to be asked to confirm the nomination by the Citizens Advisory Committee of the current executive director to another five-year term without the benefit of having any outside objective review of his job performance during his first six and a half years on the job in this position. I was also troubled to hear that the person who headed up the Citizen Advisory Committee said at the most recent DWP MOU committee meeting that there has not been a review, nor will there ever be a review of the OPA. The Office of Public Accountability should not itself be above public accountability. So when I first supported the creation of a ratepayer advocate position, I foresaw an actual advocate who would provide all the information ratepayers and the city council would need to make effective choices as we move towards an uncertain future, especially with the specter of climate disaster looming over us, and that is true literally if you look at the Woolsey Fire. The city and our utility must successfully achieve a complete transformation of our energy system within the next twenty years, which is no small feat. What are the eventual consequences if despite a lower-cost energy choice, it ends up helping to accelerate global warming? It's clear from Mr. Pickle's prior statements that he doesn't believe it is the responsibility of the OPA to advocate for the best interests of the ratepayer, both in economic terms and also looking into the future of what's best for the ratepayer on a macro level. He believes his only mission is to provide analysis and information, that his is an advisory position and not really an advocate position. This statement flies in the face of the legislative intent in creating the OPA as well as the direct language of the charter. The charter is silent on the duties of the ratepayer advocate, although motions and discussion at the time provide some ideas of legislative intent. This is the opportunity for the council to step in and provide clearer guidance by ordinance as to what the primary tasks of the ratepayer advocate should be. We as elected officials are subject to performance review at least every election, and in my case, I meet with very active HOAs as a group once a quarter and get reviewed on my performance as well. It doesn't make any sense that we spend the amount of money we're spending without an ongoing, regular, independent assessment of the position to make sure that our ratepayers are getting their money's worth. In assessing the OPAs and the executive director's performance, here's a few things I would like to know. Should he have been more critical of the DWP's new billing system by analyzing the potential pitfalls that could plague its implementation? Has his office been advocating for the interests of our lower-income residents in terms of the programs the DWP has wanted to implement? Did the OPA utilize city resources responsibly and effectively? Did the OPA manage his budget as planned? Were there any funds unspent which could have been used for additional work? Did the OPA hire staff effectively? Why were vacancies not filled, especially when this charter specifically calls for the hiring of a ratepayer advocate? Based on the actions and underutilization of city resources provided to the OPA, Mr. Pickle's goals appear limited to advising the DWP and certainly don't seem to include ratepayer advocacy. So I'd like to ask the representatives from CIO and CLA to come to the table to discuss this issue if they are present. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Sarai Baga, CIO's office.
Rafael Pedro, CLA's office.
Well, welcome. So first, are you aware if Personnel offered the Citizens Advisory Committee the resources to conduct a job performance review of the current executive director prior to his nomination?
Well, that might be a better, responded by Personnel Department, but from, you know, our workings with Personnel Department, it appears they provided adequate resources to allow the Citizens Commission to determine, make a determination with respect to the selection of the executive director.
But so, if they didn't hold a job performance review, that wouldn't have been because Personnel didn't offer the resources?
Uh, yes.
Is there any reason why we couldn't establish an annual job performance going forward?
My sense is that the charter is specific about the duties and responsibilities of the Citizens Selection Committee, and it does not specify in that section a provision whereby a performance review per se, and what we would know as a traditional performance review, is one of their obligations.
Is there anything that would prevent the city or that committee from taking that on?
You know, just to provide some background on Citizens Committee, to some degree, they in essence did provide evaluation during the course of their proceedings. They had a series of interviews which they conducted. As part of those interviews, they evaluated the candidates that they had before them. With regard to the candidate that they've selected, they also conducted an evaluation to some degree of the work performed as part of the past several years. They did the same type of evaluation, you know, asking questions and so forth, of the other candidates as well. So in some degree, they did perform an evaluation. Was it a traditional evaluation as you might perceive? Well, that's probably up for further discussion, but they did evaluate performance.
Yeah, it would appear to be not have been a very intense evaluation because the current incumbent in this position failed to do the most obvious thing requested when the charter was written and the position was created. And if they hadn't asked, why did you not hire a ratepayer advocate? And why do you not think that's one of the obligations of the job? That would have to be the most lightheanded review that one could ever have, virtually not being a review, in my opinion. So I'm going to move on to public testimony. Thank you. First speaker, Andrea Leon Grossman, to be followed by Jamie Court and Tony Wilkinson. And you'll each have two minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Leon Grossman, and I'm here on behalf of Food and Water Watch. I would like to express my deep concern about Fred Pickle. As a ratepayer as well, I don't have any confidence in Fred Pickle. I don't think he advocates on my behalf of the behalf of ratepayers in Los Angeles. He voted for the Delta Tunnels, water that Angelenos are not going to get, so why should we be paying for a boondoggle of a project that is not going to give us any water, any new water, and is also just going to be subsidizing corporations? So I think that's just an aberration. Moreover, I met with Fred Pickle back in May of this year, where we discussed the new power plant that DWP just approved, and in his words was that it was okay to spend almost a billion dollars of ratepayer money on a new plant that is basically going to be powered by dirty fossil fuel, like dirty gas, and is going to still contribute to climate change, and it will be okay to decommission that in ten years, because in his words, in ten years is basically the lifespan of a power plant. And that's actually incorrect. In ten years, they, it might need more maintenance, but it doesn't necessarily just go out of service. So to me, again, as someone who cares about climate change and as a ratepayer, I think it's just unconscionable that we're going to be spending a billion dollars of ratepayer money towards a power plant that is going to be built by, in 2025 is going to be completed by then, and it's going to be obsolete by then, and it's going to contribute to more climate change and climate disaster. So again, I just don't think that he represents the ratepayers, and he just approves rate hikes and drifts rubber stamps, whatever the industry wants. So I urge for review, and I support this motion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Court.
If Mr. Wilkinson is going to speak, it might be better if he goes first, or, I don't know if he, if there's a preference.
If he doesn't object, would you like to speak first?
No, I'd like to speak first. You're trying to change the order.
Okay, we'll leave it in the order.
Well, I'd like to, having no idea what Mr. Wilkinson will say, we do have a video of Mr. Wilkinson at the DWP Advisory Committee, where, I'd like to enter it for the record, given what he says. It's a little shoddy in here with the, but basically, it's a question, has there ever been a job review, formal job review of Fred Pickle? And if so, when was it performed? And I'd like to ask, Tony, I'd like to ask Camden, who this is number two. Tony says no. No, never been a formal job review for Mr. Pickle. You think that's appropriate? Yes. Why? That's the way the charter and the ordinance specifies. You think an organization employs someone for a three hundred thousand dollar a year, year after year, and never gets a formal job review? Can you think of one? Camden, the number two, says the L.A. City Council. They're laughing at the city council because they do not believe in accountability. This Citizens Committee was appointed for one reason. This Citizens Committee was appointed for one reason, to pick Mr. Pickle. And the reason I know that is because if there was a search committee who was looking for a ratepayer advocate, and they had 30 applications, and one of those applications came from the Assembly Utilities Committee Chairman, who's looked at the investor-owned utilities rates, who's managed oversight of Public Utility Commission hearings, who's looked at ratepayer issues in the legislature for a decade, who's looked at water and power issues through the DWR, do you think the chairman of the Assembly Utilities Committee would have gotten a phone call and email from a search committee looking to replace the ratepayer advocate of the city of L.A.? I'm not saying hiring. I'm saying a phone call, an email, a conversation. Well, we know that Mr. Gatto put in an application and never got a phone call.
I'll have to ask you to wrap up.
I know the search committee was supposed to search, but it seems like they came up with their conclusion, "This is a $300,000 a year job. It deserves a job review." The head of the Office of Public Accountability needs to have a process where he is publicly accountable, and I believe that it is the job of the same agencies that review people in the city to review the job of the ratepayer advocate. We did a report called "The Price of Pickle" that charted Mr. Pickle's cost to the city at a little under $7 billion when looking at ratepayer hikes and looking at other costs like transfers to the city budget. He is silent on ratepayer issues. That is our opinion.
You'll have to wrap up.
But there should be a review for an independent opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Wilkinson.
Hello, Councilmember Kuratz. I am the chair of the Citizens Committee to select the candidate for the ratepayer advocate, and that is now before you and your, the other committee, my Councilwoman's committee, and the city council. And so, I just wanted to come personally because there's been lots of stuff. I actually included a reference to that video in my own tweet about the same issue. The person who spoke up and produced the laughter was Joanne Albanova, I can't pronounce her last name, from West Hills. It wasn't Camden Collins, and they were actually laughing against me at the questioner about the city doing this. But my retort, just to speak directly to you, was not that, was that the employment job review did not appear to me to be authorized by the charter and the ordinance as it currently stands, as an individual, because that would provide duress under providing, you know, independence in his opinions. Certainly, that office is subject, for example, to internal audit by the controller, so it was not meant to say, "Never can anybody review that office." I can't speak for my other four colleagues, but I do want to be able to speak for myself that we were going forward with this, we were not looking backward. However, we did evaluate this candidate's experience and writings, just like we did those of other candidates, so that they'd all be treated equally. So, that did get considered. And one of the things that we did look at is that this position needs to have a lot of background to be able to deal with the 100% renewable, thank you for that suggestion, and, you know, your motion, and the new mayor's motion to do university studies, and has to be capable of being able to help the elected officials and the board, the policymakers, to actually debate and decide the policy. And so, that did, I'm speaking for myself, not for my other four colleagues, inform the way that we went forward with this, and I do believe that in the process of evaluating the candidate itself, it would be, this request for review, you have the right to do anything in your process that you need, but that might unnecessarily slow down the process. I just wanted personally to let you know that this is the context, that we did, we're not looking, we were specifically, I was not looking for a loud champion of particular policies. I really wanted to see those policies become dinner table conversation with input from elected officials and the board.
So, let's say, for an example, that he had been the worst possible choice for this job and had done the worst possible job anyone you could find in the entire country. You would still just look at his resume going forward and not look back at his performance in the past six and a half years?
Oh, but, I was, I'm sorry, I'm trying to make my two minutes, I was, that is the opposite. Everybody needs equal, it's an employment search, so everybody needs to be treated equally. We looked at every candidate's writings and performance in their job that they held, including the current, it happens to be that the ratepayer advocate applied, so that that job performance and those writings were evaluated, so everybody received the same treatment. So, we did consider that, but we specifically did not view our charge under the charter as evaluating the ratepayer advocate. It was, we decided to try and look forward, completely unlike Mr. Court's suggestion. I can tell you absolutely, public and private meetings, that this committee only had the next five years in our vision, and this, and we were trying very hard to do that.
So, if you did actually evaluate his performance, did you ever compare what the charter said he was supposed to do with the fact that he didn't do the most basic thing directed specifically in the charter of hiring a ratepayer advocate and have his office function as a ratepayer advocate?
Well, I can tell you what we did do in our public meetings, because this does, since we did it together, this does involve my other four colleagues, we made two changes to the position description before we ever started the evaluation process, before it was published. One of them was to increase the emphasis on public engagement. The other one was to insert familiarity with triple bottom line, you know, profits, people, and planet, instead of just financial analysis, because, and that actually represented a viewpoint from all five of us about what we wanted to see in the next five years, and you can imply maybe that's something that we didn't see in the last five years.
So, I'm still not sure you answered my question.
I'm sorry.
So, the fact that he didn't do the most obvious directed thing in his job description, and yet you felt you evaluated him and he was the best choice, despite complete failure to do the most basic purpose of the job?
The ratepayer advocate, and I'm not making personal judgment, and yours may differ, appointed himself, he's an employee too, to also be the ratepayer advocate. So, he did appoint a ratepayer advocate, which is himself. He actually--
Did it be hire himself? Because I believe the charter says you must hire a ratepayer advocate.
I'll leave that to the lawyers. But there was one position that's unfilled, because my memory does go back to that original, now six and a half years ago, which is one of the things that concerns me about any delay, and there was one of the exempt positions that was not hired, and that position was for community outreach. So, if you actually go back and look at the archives, that was a position that was not filled. And then, if you look at five people having it on in public comment, I mean, public session, the changes we made to the job description specifically emphasized that. So, I'm not, I don't want to discuss, you know, our confidential process, but I do want to just say what we did in public comment. If you put that together with that job not being filled, I'm not sure that you and I are disagreeing an awful lot on the issue of, you know, public engagement, but I, but more may differ, is that in your motion, there are a lot of different positions that the ratepayer advocate has taken, and many of them, obviously, you disagree with, but my personal concern is that those positions are not in publicly, generally accessible language. There needs to be more engagement with the public, and I think that elected officials in your staffs, and I take it on myself, because, you know, I, as a volunteer, worked with the MOU Committee between neighborhood councils and the department, I think a lot of us need to take whatever comes out of that office, whether we like it or don't like it, and do our best to make certain it gets, the public gets engaged with those decisions one way or the other. I'm more concerned about the issues than I am about whether or not the ratepayer advocate took my position or not.
Well, and I might agree with you there, but if you're saying, which I think violates the charter, that he appointed and hired himself as ratepayer advocate, he's also publicly stated he doesn't view himself as the ratepayer advocate. So, if he's hired himself as the ratepayer advocate, and it would appear violation of the charter, because I don't think he can hire himself, and yet then says, "I'm not the ratepayer advocate," how could a body say that this guy has fulfilled his task and deserves to be reappointed?
Well, in that, I would say it then comes down to clarification in the ordinance and your legislative oversight of that part. The charter just generally enables his independent office, and then your ordinance fleshed it out in terms of, I think that's the area where it's most appropriate, as opposed to a personnel-oriented job review. That's the context in which I was fearing that if someone's personnel review of their employment was part of this, it would undermine the independence, it would be a, that, it would, the spirit of the independence would be jeopardized. That's where I was coming from.
Okay, well, I, from my point of view, I think it's absolutely crystal clear, but I think it makes a point that it may not be, so we'll--
I just, I just want to share, I'm not opposing--
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, and thank you for your volunteer service. I appreciate that as well, and this city does. We have one more speaker, William Funderburke.
Hello. One second here, let me just pull this up. Good afternoon, Chairman Kuratz, and thank you for your service. Thank you for the service of staff, most important wherever the lawyers are, I want to especially thank you for coming here right before Thanksgiving. This is an important issue for me. My name is William Funderburke. I am testifying as a private citizen and ratepayer of the Los Angeles Department of Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, private citizen of the city of Los Angeles. I served on the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, as you know, as the appointed vice president. I was appointed and reappointed and confirmed by the city council unanimously in 2013 and 2017. I stepped down from that position in 2019. There was a lot has been done at DWP for the past five years, and a lot is owing to your oversight. I support Fred Pickle's appointment as ratepayer advocate. I want to caution everybody who likes to talk about equity and consumer rights, that equities sometimes go the opposite way when you waste administrative time on things and you waste, you don't, things are not balanced. Climate is important, but the project that was before the LA DWP and later approved by the city council was in Utah and not here. The impacts were in Utah. Climate impacts may have been larger, but they were not here. Those are among many of the considerations that we had to balance. Fred Pickle has been, Dr. Fred Pickle has been a balancer, and he's been somebody who the, who the commission, at least me as a commissioner, I can't speak for the others, relied on significantly, and this was a startup of, this is a first ratepayer advocate, so there are bound to be things that were going to happen. The one thing that I want to close with is that if, evaluation criteria should be in place, but if this was such a big issue, why wasn't this issue raised a while ago when this process started? That's not necessarily a reason to go forward and approve it, but I want to think about the resources that are being considered. I think it's important to vet the issue publicly, but I also want to think about the long game, which is to make L.A. a cleaner, clean energy city, and thank you again for your service, council member.
Thank you, thank you for your service as well. I would say personally, I have raised issues with Mr. Pickle's performance and pointed them out over probably a course of six and a half years, so none of these issues are brand new. I believe that in approving this motion, the council should be provided with some potential recommendations as to what metrics we want a consultant to use to adequately analyze Mr. Pickle's job performance and future individuals that might hold this job. I'd also recommend that the CAO and CLA report back to the council on the proposed contents of an ordinance to more fully explain the duties and responsibility of the ratepayer advocate in the Office of Public Accountability. And so, I would like for that to be done, so we have some clearer metrics. I always thought the metrics were pretty clear if you combine the charter, the motions that led to creation of the Charter Amendment, and all the discussions that occurred as we moved forward, but it would appear that there are divergent opinions on what I thought was clear, so this would be an opportunity for the council to make some recommendations as to what those metrics should be. So, I'd like to ask the CLO and CAO to, CAO to do that, and I know this will be moved on to a further committee and we'll have further commentary, and I would hope this returns to this committee once that has been done. So, with that having been said, I would move this item forward, and as the one member, it'll be a communication of the chair, and seeing no other business on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, one last thing, I'm sorry. It's come to our attention for item number seven, which was an exemption of a deputy, excuse me, not item seven, it's, item number eight, exemption of one assistant director of sanitation, review of sanitation. Apparently, the memo from the mayor's office was erroneous, and therefore, the recommendation was, I believe, to receive and file it potentially.
Yes, so--
Okay.
So, that--
Clarify.
--item on consent is to receive and file the report.
Very good.
And with that last clarification, we are adjourned.